Always.
My. Always.
First. Certain. Word. Okay.
Yeah. Going to, Alder's got a basket. Yeah. Basket. Yep.
Well, there we've been in. Huh? Oh. I'll let you. Oh, okay.
For us.
How about thirty to forty-five?
Yeah.
Thought you got a noon. Are you kidding? What? No. No. I. It is.
Get everybody to sign in, please. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to City Hall on this wonderful ninth day of January in the year 2018. I am Mayor Meese and this is the Community Redevelopment Agency, the CRA. Take a look at your agenda. According to my watch, I have five thirty-five PM here in the afternoon. And we have an agenda. Number one, approval of December minutes. You should have received a copy of the December minutes in your packet for review. And if you haven't had a chance to look over those, please do so at this time. And if someone feels confident to make a motion, we'll entertain that.
Motion to approve.
A motion from Councilman Lowry. Second Council, was it Councilman Holly? Councilman Holly? Okay. Discussion. Seeing there is none, please vote. And the motion passes. All right. Item number two, we have the approval of the January financial report. And you should have received a copy of that as well in your packet. And if not, had a chance to look at it, please do so now. And if somebody feels confident of making a motion.
Motion.
A motion from Councilman Snow. Do we have a second?
Okay.
That's Councilwoman Johnson. Discussion.
I think, Mayor, I had a.
Sure.
Something else.
Okay.
I do.
You got a question? All right. Mr. Lowry?
On the food and wine festival.
Sure.
The fifteen hundred dollars. Was that because, I mean, we didn't have it, so was that expenses we had even though we didn't have it?
Um, this case, I think it's really setting up for, well, we did have some expenses we had on there, but I think they're trying to set up again for this year, too. They're going to try to reconstitute and do it again.
Okay.
See if we can pull it off.
So they've already spent.
No, they just sold it last year. Is that what you're saying? Didn't have it, but they still want.
Right. That's correct.
Pushed it over.
And, yes. In that case, that is an expense on the line here, though it would have been either money we spent or, or money they've spent on last year's or preparing for this year. But I'll double check that one and.
Didn't first.
Make sure.
It's, it's showing at Councilment as a.
Yeah. Yeah. There one is an expense line on there.
Yeah.
I'll check on that. Make sure we go.
All right. Any other comments or questions about that? Seeing that there are none, please vote. And the motion passes unanimously. All right. Item three, we have persons to appear. Is there anyone here today that would like to speak to the CRA about an item pertaining to the CRA that's not found on the agenda? If so, please come forward. Say your name and address for the record, please, and welcome the city of Milton. All right. See, nobody wants to talk to us. We're going to close out persons to appear.
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, oh, come on.
I don't know if this is the time for this, but I want to speak about the Canal Street Park. Is this the right time?
Uh, depends on, depends on what you want to talk. Yeah, sure.
Okay. My name is Miller McCombs and I live at five zero eight one Canal Street.
Okay.
And I was told recently that the park that is now being completed will have free Wi-Fi in that park area. Is that true?
Not to my knowledge. I don't, we don't.
Haven't, I have not heard that.
No.
All right. Well, that's all I wanted to ask. I wouldn't, couldn't understand why we would use our tax dollars to supply free Wi-Fi for people sitting in that park.
No, we do not have any sort of Wi-Fi.
All right. Thank you.
All right. With all the free, fresh air and. Sounds you can enjoy. And occasionally a train will come by. Yeah. All right. Item four, anybody else want to speak? I want to leave everybody out. Okay. We have item number four, the, well, actually, number four, which is item fifty-nine, the Riverfront Redevelopment Team board vacancy. There was one vacancy on the RRT. And the appointment must be a resident of one of the CRAs. And this is for discussion. Do you have a, a running list?
No, sir. Actually, we, we don't have anyone that fits the requirement for that one.
Okay.
That has paid application.
Well, how about we do this? We, we can, we can have it as discussion item for the committee of the whole. If you want to come up with some individuals, we can pick some names around and maybe appoint somebody at the next CRA in February.
Yes, sir.
Maybe we could have Pam do the advertising like we've been doing. Have you advertised that one yet?
On our city Facebook page, there is an advertisement for all of the committees that have vacancies. And it's been pinned to the top of the page for quite some time now. I have actually shared it more than once just to get attention.
All right. It shouldn't be too hard to find somebody in the, in one of the CRAs that wants to fill that position. I'm sure we can do it. All right?
Can I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, I was going to ask, can't have another list ready for us for all the vacant, all the different that we, for the committee of the whole meeting?
Committee of the whole, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right. And that was just a discussion item. Brian, are you aware of any other business tonight?
No, sir.
All right. And so with that said, this meeting is adjourned. We'll reconvene in five minutes for the city council meeting.
Got a Heather.
I know. Killer name.
Helen. Helen, her going away. Hang on that.
That's.
Oh.
Have a cold.
Everyone.
Aren't you in? Ow. All the, all the vitamins.
Take them all.
Take them all.
Huh?
Take regular vitamins?
Um.
Yeah.
Hell.
Now would probably be a good time to think about it.
Probably should do that.
Elektric cold.
Not want to do that.
Little kid germs.
Yeah.
I just, oh, my wife.
My suit, no.
Hand it to her. You take care of all that.
Thank my wife.
That's what I figured.
Brother-in-law, man.
Well, I didn't say.
I still had that.
Getting a lot of daddy. And a whole.
My brother-in-law would have turned eighty in September. Just recently.
Actually, that's mine.
I got.
Always have to watch it. I would buy it. So if I ever looked out of whack, you.
For your guy.
Certain shades of, like.
Oh, yeah.
I can, I'm not like. Shoot him. First. No. Yeah, I can't afford his clothes, though.
I know. I think. I heard. Yeah, they, I thought. Okay.
Say the, her name.
Yeah. Oh, the ice skater. Ice skater? I know whatever. Last. I'm not. And then he was like, I want to tell you.
No, I mean.
Butter. Butter.
Look.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you back here to City Hall on this wonderful ninth day of January in the year 2018. I am Mayor Meese and this is the Milton City Council meeting. According to my watch, I have five forty-seven PM here in the afternoon. Want to welcome everybody to City Hall. And we're going to open up this meeting. As always, we'll have an invocation tonight by Randy Jackson from First Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So Randy, if you'll please approach the microphone and after he's done, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here. We thank you that we live in a country with the government that we have, where, where government operates with the consent of its citizens. And we pray, Father, for these elected officials and others who are gathered here that you will grant wisdom and direction and that all will act for the best interest of our, of our city and our community. Father, we pray that your Spirit will guide the proceedings. We pray, Father, that you will be honored and glorified. In Jesus' name, amen. Pledge of allegiance with the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Counsel, you should have received a copy of the agenda today. And counsel or either staff, do you have any changes you'd like to make to the agenda? If so, please speak now. Counsel?
I got one thing I'd like to add.
Okay, add?
Yeah. About lighting. You get to the council section.
Okay. So under Lowry, we'll put. Was that page three? All right. Anybody else? Staff, do you have anything to add? No? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Remove.
All right. Motion from Councilwoman Johnson. Do we have a second? Second from Councilman Powell. Discussion. Seeing there is none, please vote. And the motion passes. All right. We have item five here. That's the December twelfth, two thousand seventeen regular meeting minutes. And you should have received a copy of those minutes in your packet. And of course, had a chance to review those. If not, please do so. And if we'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
A motion from Councilman Lowry. Do we have a second? Second, Councilman Snow. Discussion. Seeing there is none, please vote. The motion passes unanimously. All right, good. All right, item six, we have, tonight we have recognitions and we have of some outgoing board members and service awards for their service to the community. And I think we'll do these one at a time. Is Gail, Gail Timms here? Ms. Timms, did she come? Couldn't make it. Okay.
Tell, tell us the length of service and which.
Yeah, exactly. Gail Timms, of course, and we'll, we can, we can get this to her correct. She served twelve years on the Historic Preservation Board, twelve years of service, presented to Gail Timms on this ninth day of January two thousand eighteen, in grateful recognition of your faith, dedication, and years of service to the City of Milton's Historic Preservation Board. Signed, Mayor Wesley Meese and Brian Watkins, the city manager. So we thank her for her service. And of course, we will make sure this gets to her as soon as possible. And we hope she gets to feeling better. Next up, we have Ms. Teresa Messick. Ms. Messick, would you please come forward?
Press.
Ms. Messick, she's served eight years on the City of Milton's Historic Preservation Board. Of course, it's presented this ninth day of January two thousand eighteen. All right. Next up, we have Ms. Mary Gold. She's going forward. Uh, Ms. Gold, she served eight years on the City of Milton's Historic Preservation Board. Of course, presented this ninth day of January two thousand eighteen, in grateful recognition of her way of dedication to her service to the city of Milton.
Thank you very much. Thank you, counsel. Mrs. Lutzford, Pat, I thank you for nominating me eight years ago to serve as a volunteer on the city's preservation board. You have always been a perfect example of what a perfect public servant, service, public servant should be. The voters of this city recognize that in you. And when in the last election, they gave you the highest vote of anyone running for office. So continue on that road, Pat. And Ms. Holly, Sharon, I thank you for asking this, members of this council to recognize the members of the preservation board who had served as volunteer members for the people of the City of Milton and honoring them tonight. Your knowledge as a former city employee has benefited all of us. And I thank you for the hard work that I know you do every day for the people of this city. And last, I know I speak for Teresa and Gail. We could not have been volunteers if we did not have the full support of our families. I have a wonderful husband, daughters and grandchildren, and two wonderful son-in-laws, and these ladies do also. And without their support, we would have not been able to volunteer the endless hours that we gave to the people of this city. So I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, um, this one, uh, I thought we should do, uh, we were able to, uh, to do this earlier, but this Barbara Rankin, who served for ten years on the City of Milton's Preservation Board, has a dedicated service. And she also served in many other aspects as well. And so, we would like to present this award in order to this Barbara Rankin. If someone here would like to receive an award tonight. Ms. Mary Johnson can receive this award on behalf of this Barbara Rankin. And she, of course, uh, mentioned Barbara, and will also make sure that the manager receives it. And finally, um, another woman, just, just, um, as a long woman tonight, the Romary, uh, who did not be here tonight either, uh, recently passed away, both recently, uh, this Sammy Carroll, who on the specific board, the city's, the Startup Preservation Board, served four years. And, um, Ms. Carroll, uh, recently passed away, passed away. And uh, I believe there's someone here that would accept the award on behalf of Ms. Sharp, uh, the folks at Ms. Sharp, would accept the award on behalf of this Sammy Carroll.
And Mr. Mayor, I do believe that Sammy also served about twenty years on the, on the planning board. So, uh, she put a lot of years of community service in this thing.
Well, Ms. Holly, of course, these awards tonight were, were your idea for thanking these people for their service. And I think you've established quite a precedent. And what I would like to suggest that future as a precedent, that we continue to honor our volunteers and our service, people who serve the city in this way. And so typically what happens is, you know, I will send a certificate to them and it'll be sent to them in the mail or they'll, when we see them here at City Hall. But I think this is, this is a more appropriate way of doing it. And we haven't done it this way in the past. And I think that it should be done this way. So I want to thank you for, for the idea. I think that, does everybody agree?
Absolutely.
So I think that's a good way to do it. And that's how we should do things here in the city of Milton. So with that said, one more round of applause for everyone who received an award tonight. All right. So when we move on in the agenda, we have item seven, the public hearings slash meetings. Number one, a public hearing for the transmittal package comprehensive plan amendment. And I'm going to go ahead and open up that hearing. Yes, ma'am.
Cassandra Sharp, thirty-one oh nine Waterview Drive. I did speed read this because I had just received it, but I was reading over the ordinance. And I was wondering if anyone could point out to me where it specifically states in here that the city does not support the forelanding of Highway ninety. Because I clearly remember this council voting that that was part of the verbiage that was to be included along with the statement, reading the City of Milton values the historic character of its downtown area and desires to protect. But I specifically remember the verbiage about no forelanding of Highway ninety. I remember you specifically saying you did not want to support or advocate for a specific route. But I thought that was the verbiage that was to be in here. And I simply didn't find it. So I apologize. I'm here a little bit late and it was a speed read. But if somebody could point it out, I would, I would like to see where, what paragraph and where it is, please.
I don't, if I remember correctly, the language was specifically written and presented to the council by Councilman Snow. And it was, and that is the language that we have added into this. I don't remember there being anything about. I don't remember there being anything about...
In fact, the language was given to staff by Councilman Snow. It was discussed by council. This is verbatim, exactly what we were given.
Exactly what was presented and voted on by the council, I think.
Correct.
Mr. Snow, short of, in fact, I felt like we made it pretty seriously that we did not want it four-lane, add that language. I guess that's the only major heartburn I have. You know, you've said about flexibility, aesthetically, you know, compatible, et cetera, et cetera, but there's enough wiggle room in there.
I would be willing to amend it, including no four-lane.
That would make me very happy. It's just, we, we've argued the plan, we've argued the point, and there's lots of examples of people who really, really think we need it. And then, there are people like Clint Studer, who have proven to us that there are alternatives, and we just really don't have to have it. And, you know, personally, I'll be dead before they build it, but I'm just saying, I'm not happy with it.
All right. Yes, sir.
As it relates to adding additional language, this language has been through what is not an insignificant process. To bring it before you here this evening, any change that would add language to the process would begin that process anew. The language that is found here is the language that is being considered at the hearing this evening, and is the language, I'm sure, on which others would like to comment. If you'd like us to put language in an amendment to the comprehensive plan that is different than what's described, we can initiate that process. But at no time was staff, at any meeting I was present, instructed to put in language that said that the city was opposed to the four-laning of Highway 90. We were instructed to say, "The City of Milton values the historic character of its downtown area and desires to protect those resources from the adverse effects of any future roadway improvements." Now, that's very subjective. What Mr. Snow feels is an adverse impact may be the filling of a pothole, and Councilman Paul may think that if you widen Highway 90 to six lanes and only remove three buildings, that you're not adversely affecting Highway 90. It's very subjective, and I'll give you that. It is, however, a way to find out, at the very least, whether or not there is an interest on a state level of objecting to a position taken by this community in regard to a state facility that is different than what the state might intend. And I would encourage you, following comments, unless further change is necessary before submission, to advance this in this process as it's currently constructed.
May I also suggest, in case you haven't seen it lately, look under section four, issue two, and the underlined language is also being added, which may assist you in evaluating the suggestion.
We have on staff someone whose skill sets lend themselves well to this activity. They are an expert in transportation and historic preservation. The language you find there was derived from their knowledge of this subject matter and the importance of making references as they're described. That language, I believe, strengthens the position that council had taken as it relates to the expressions that had been made. The language in regard to Highway 90 is simply not found there, and it doesn't matter how long it takes you to read it, you're not going to find it.
It does specifically, language that I believe Lindsey has pointed out, does specifically refer to US 90 intersection downtown, and it's just saying that wanting to preserve as much as we can. So, it is actually, there is some language there that does include US 90 as specific.
It speaks to the importance of not just a building, or not just a number of buildings, but the setting, the historic importance of multimodal transportation within this community, and that that part of this community represents all of those modes. And that's what it alludes to, and I think it does that in an eloquent fashion. I think it, I think it strengthens your position. The trouble with making a change to the language, to add something at this point in time, would return that language to the planning board for their review, prior to your consideration. So, we would go back into, again, that 60 to 90 day process, but staff will do whatever council desires.
Well, first, since we've been fighting 20 years, I don't know what another six months?
Yes, sir.
George Jordan, 5585 Polaris Drive, Milton, Florida. And I'm against changing this language. Randy told us, when this issue first come up, that there were already provisions in the comprehensive plan to take care of the protection of the historic area. This is just an attempt, just like you're saying, to send a message to the FDOT that we don't want Milton to have a four-lane through downtown. That's a lie. That may be your belief, but that's a lie. A small group of people don't want it, but the majority of Milton's citizens do. I've been out walking through our neighborhoods and talking to people. Star Ridge, Cedar Ridge, your neighborhood, Jammy Ridge, and other places. I spent the time on my feet, out talking to our citizens, which you should have done. And the citizens want this thing four-laned to get rid of this traffic problem. And if you pass this, you'll be passing what you and a small group of people, probably your campaign donors, won't. And you won't be doing anything that the people want. Because I believe it was at least 50 to one that wanted the four-lane. I believe it was more like 100 to one that wanted the four-lane. And I've talked to a lot of people. So, if you pass this, you're lying to yourself, and you're taking advantage of the people that put you in that office. Thank you.
Vernon Compton, 5149 Santa Rosa Street. This has been, for, for years and years and years, a very emotional issue, as you just heard from the first speaker, who, you know, basically is saying that this is a lie, that, that, that people don't support this.
All right. Hey, we're not gonna, we're not gonna talk to the audience.
Let me, let me give you some facts. Let me give you some facts, not just someone getting up and instilling fear and division in the community. When the city did a survey on what routes people in the, in this community favored, they sent out to everyone in the city a card for them to vote on and return to the city. And 65% of the people favored a route other than four-laning. That was sent to our community, to our city, and that's a fact. The City of Milton had CRA, Community Vision Plan, meetings. I attended them. I was here. Those who participated indicated a strong desire, these were City of Milton residents, to limit the future segregation of the community by Highway 90. Again, a City of Milton, multiple public meetings, and the citizens said, "We don't want it." So, that's not a lie. I mean, that's a meeting that was conducted in this room. There was a petition that was here for several years, that Main Street Milton had out in the community, in businesses. Over 5,000 people signed that, many of them City of Milton residents. 5,000 people? Milton's historic district was listed on the 11 most endangered sites, now Florida's 11 to save, for many, many years, by the Florida Trust for Historic Preservation. And again, this is not an us versus them, this is our city. It's the City of Milton. I support the Milton, the Milton businesses on the four-lane, but people that invest in the downtown historic area, they expect from the city a certain level of support of knowing that that district is going to be protected. That's just what you've done. And that's what the, previously was in the comp plan, which I have copies of. And then, DOT had a corridor public meeting about which routes does the city, which route do people favor? 55 favored a no-build or other alternative routes, such as a southern alternative. 32 favored four-laning, and six voicing opposition to such a plan. Again, the majority of people favored a route other than four-laning. So, you just go on and on and on with requests to the public, public meetings, petitions, and people keep on saying, others get up and say, "It's just a minority, it's just a few people," or they threaten that it was just people that supported a certain few of you. That's just not the truth. It's not the facts. And they try and instill division in this fine community by saying, "It's either/or." And if you look at communities like Crestview, Fort Walton, all over our country, they're trying to undo previous transportation mistakes. What are they saying? If you want economic development, you have to have connectivity of your roads. And if you keep on putting everything on one road, just look at Highway 98 in the south end of, of Santa Rosa County. Look at Highway 84 in Crestview. Fort Walton Beach is talking about this right now. The businesses don't want to see that, what's happening with that main corridor with Highway 98. They want an alternative, because connectivity works. We could do that if we all worked together, instead of this divisive stuff that you hear from a small portion of the community. It's not us versus them, it's not us versus the businesses on four-laning, on the four-lane in Milton. But this downtown is an economic driver. It can be so much for Milton and Santa Rosa County, and I value what you're trying to do, the majority of you. I thank you for that, for listening. You're trying to do the right thing. Please don't get sidetracked by these accusations and fear mongering that you hear at times at these meetings. Thank you.
George Jordan, 5585 Polaris Drive, Milton, Florida. What I told you was the truth, and it was up to date. My information was received since Christmas.
George, can you be, hold the mic close?
The information that I gave you was a survey done since Christmas. The information was up to date, and it was taken from citizens, and not just a select group that were willing to fill out a card and send it back in. These people in Milton want this traffic problem taken care of, and they want this four-lane to be done, so they can have this problem fixed as quick as possible. This is, I mean, where's all those people that want it? We keep having people stand up and say they want it, but all we see is a few. I got out, I walked through the neighborhoods, and I found that it was 50 to one to 100 to one that wanted it. That was the shoe leather on my feet and my effort. Don't let a man come up here and tell you I'm lying. Go out there and ask people yourself. Thank you.
We are having a public meeting after this, correct?
This is, this is the...
During, okay, fine.
Yes, ma'am.
Sir, I'm sorry, hang on. Mr. Jordan Jurgensen, what are you saying?
Just, there is another public hearing at the adoption phase of this trial.
Okay, and that was noticed, correct?
Right, and that will be...
I misunderstood you.
Like, if, if you approve the transmittal tonight, it will get sent out for review by all the state agencies and everybody concerned. All the comments that come back, there will be another adoption meeting where we'll have to do it again.
I misunderstood...
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Lauren Sherrick, I live at 6034 Mer Salt Road, that's in Jamies Ridge. I just moved here last March, and so, this is my first meeting. I don't know anything about any previous discussions. It was brought to my attention that there was going to be verbiage change. I am in agreement with this gentleman in the tan suit, I don't know what his name was, that that is what people I've talked to would like to see done, have the road expanded. The traffic is ridiculous, it bottlenecks, and it's just crazy. My husband works at Santa Rosa Prison, is a correction officer. He goes back and forth on that road every day, and it's a nightmare. We would like to see something addressed, and I don't think it's an exaggeration to say that the majority of people do want to see it done. I know that people I've talked to in our subdivision do want to see the expansion widened. Thank you.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Carol Johnstone, 5914 Hogan's Alley. Prior to my appointment on the Historic Preservation Board, I did a little survey myself. I called everybody that I knew who was born and raised in Milton, Florida, and I put that question before to them. I asked them how they felt about a four-lane highway coming through the middle of the historic district of Milton, Florida. And their overwhelming answer was no. They did not want to see it, because they did not want it to do affect any of the historic buildings in Milton. I also have a mother who lives in, out, in East Milton, and I regularly go out there to visit her, she's 93. And I have been in that traffic, and I have timed it on my watch from being on the, on the, on the overpass, backed up traffic, and it has never, ever been more than five minutes. That's not very long, really.
I just want to say, I didn't survey my friends. I didn't survey my friends on Facebook, I didn't survey my friends on the, on the community. I went out and surveyed strangers. Thank you.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Teresa Messick, 6830 Pine Street. I do live in the historical district. I served on the preservation board for eight years. I took it very, very serious. As a matter of fact, I asked a couple of them on here, "Why was I not re-chosen to be on this?" And it was because of my stand on Highway 90. I took the time to really, really investigate this. I also served on Main Street Milton, and this 5,000 so-called signatures, they can't verify that. Call Peggy Kelly at FDOT and see. During my time of surveying these people, I knocked on the doors behind some of these homes that would be affected, behind Berry Hill, and they were not very happy with that alternative. As far as Highway 90, I called SHPO, spoke to them, wanted to know how they were protecting these buildings. I live in a historical home, it was built in 1860s. I treasure that. I wanted to know what buildings would be affected. The only building that would be affected, possibly, would be the Fisher-Hamilton Building. What are you going to do to protect it? I asked engineers, I called them. Thank God, I work for my husband, because someone else would probably fired me. I've spent two, three hours on the phone, calling people in Florida, in different departments, and asking. They showed me photographs, they showed me different cities where they had moved, and this building would be moved down 60 feet, and it would be protected. Brick by brick, if they had to, wrap it in Saran, and it would be moved down 60 feet. That was the only building that would be affected, no other building. No Amagen, not the courthouse, no building would be affected. And they failed to tell the public that 1% of the total construction would go back into complete street designs, sidewalks, bicycle pedestrians, and make it really nice. I can promise you, the people on Berry Hill did not want this highway coming behind them. As far as the southern bypass, that would have affected a lot of people too, but that was removed, and it was Highway 90. Highway 90 is the less invasive to come through. We are growing, the whole county is growing, and many, many people want this to come through, business people, and it is a few people that are trying to stop this. I, for one, live in the historical district, and I... I, for one, live in the historical district, and I value that, I treasure that. When I moved from Atlanta, I called a realtor here, and I said, I want to live in the historical district. And I said, take me to East Hill and, and North Hill. Well, I couldn't touch those homes. She said, let me take you to a little town called Milton. I said, where? And so she brought me over here to this town. And when I drove up to my home, and I heard the train going, and I saw the picket fence, and I saw the people, and I walked in the door, I knew that was where I was supposed to be. I have served, not to get any brownie points, I never, I'd never asked for a plaque, but I thank each one of y'all for giving me that. But I took it very, very serious. So listen to what the people are saying. Please, Jeff, have you called Chipo? Have you called Miss Peggy Kelly? Have you spoke to the engineers? Casey, have you? I know you have, Mary. Sure you have Peggy. Sharon, Alan, Heather, have you called and spoke to these people yourself? Ask about this so-called five thousand signatures. I can promise you, I served on Main Street, Milton, many years, and when I left in two thousand and ten, I was their treasurer. And I'm telling you, as a citizen, taxpayer, I value historic buildings, value historic towns, and I am for the four-lane. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Kim McCarthy, seventy-sixty, Highway ninety. Past president of Main Street, Milton, I do value historic structures. It's not that whether a building has to be removed or not removed to widen a road. There is also damage that happens to the building by the additional traffic, the closeness of the traffic to the historic structure, the additional vibration, and, oh my gosh, the additional noise. So I'm a little perplexed that a historic homeowner in the historic district who has been the first to complain about a band, happy music, being a little too loud, the very happy sounds of a healthy nightlife in downtown, it's going to be hit with a lot more road noise. So think about that, and be careful what you wish for.
All right. Yes, sir.
I don't like to do public speaking. My name is Wyatt McCombs. I live at five oh eight one Canal Street, and I'm probably the only person in this room that knows where old Highway ninety actually is. And I, I moved here in nineteen thirty-nine with my family. I grew up in downtown Milton. I have seen the progress on Highway ninety from Veronair, Highway ninety, if you go out east Milton, you see how near it was back in those days. I've seen the traffic increase, and I know for a fact that we have got to do something with the traffic in Milton, and not only Milton, but in Santa Rosa County. But Highway ninety needs to stay. Highway ninety is probably going to be the cheapest way to have a four- or six-lane traffic through the city of Milton. If you want to see what old Highway ninety was, if you go down Henry Street, Canal Street, take a right and go out to Cook's Body Shop, that's what old Highway ninety looks like. We do not need Highway ninety through Milton looking like the swamp that we have on old Highway ninety. I encourage everybody sitting on this council to reevaluate theirselves because Highway ninety needs to come through Milton. And it can, it's probably going to be the cheapest way to do it to start off with. I thank you.
All right.
Michael Johnson, forty-six, twenty-one Forsyth Street, Baghdad, Florida. Sounds like to me we may be able to have our cake and eat it too. State of Florida and the citizens of the state are willing to pay for four lanes going through downtown Milton. This is not the land that has Stetson University bringing forty thousand students in every year to hang out in their downtown. This is not Gainesville. This is not Tallahassee, where thousands of students are coming just to hang out. If you change your mind, what has been hurt? We've moved a historic building fifty feet, and it's right back like it was. This can always be done later. During the study for the riverfront, Peter Smith out of New York was suggesting possibly extending Stewart Street to the interstate. There's too many options here that could be worked out later. And instead of trying to create something that we do, really do not know who's going to hang there. I like the restaurants down there. I hang out in, in the Bistro and, and the, what's the pizza place?
Boomerang.
Boomerangs. I love Boomerangs. We're putting the cart before the horse. We're worried about looking too far down the street. And we've got a paid thing here that's going to give us a shot in the arm. How hard would it be, five years from now, to take the four lanes going through downtown Milton, putting a median down the middle, and making it a two-lane? It just doesn't seem like much of a problem to me. But I'm worried about commerce, just like everybody else, because that's where money comes from. And I wished the Navy or somebody would send thirty thousand boys down here to hang out in downtown Milton. But it hasn't happened yet. But I know it's coming because I love this area. There's too many good things around here. There's too many good people around here. We can make this happen. Thank you.
Can I have, ask Mr. Johnson a question?
Sure.
Ask me.
Alan Lowery.
That might be God, though.
You live on Forsyth Street in Baghdad?
Correct.
So if the state come in and said, we need a hurricane evacuation from, from the interstate north, and they wanted the four-lane Forsyth Street, what would be your answer?
I'd say you can't touch any houses that the state has already designated are, are as a, we're on the National Historical Registry, okay? And there's sixty structures in Baghdad to that effect. Now, you're saying, could one of them be moved if it was in the way, like, like the Hamilton Building? Sure. I wouldn't have a problem, as long as they move it and put it back just like it is. I know there's things like that, or I would probably say, well, look, why don't you go down Church Street or another bypass to get, you know, to create it? So I know there's options.
I think the problem with this is nobody wants it in their neighborhood, though.
Nobody wants what?
Nobody wants a four-lane highway in their neighborhood.
The classic, not in my backyard.
You don't want it in, you don't want it on Forsyth Street. They don't want it.
There's not room for it on Forsyth Street. It's not a matter of.
Well, there's not now.
You can't take down all the houses.
That's kind, that's kind of our point, Mr. Johnson. That, that's how we feel about Highway ninety. I'll, I'll speak for myself. We're having a business right on Highway ninety.
So you want to be ostracized from people?
No.
Well, that's where they're going. Through four lanes and downtown.
I didn't want the pig trucks coming by either, but there wasn't anything I could do about it.
You did what?
I didn't want the pig trucks and the tractor-trailers going down Highway ninety either, but there wasn't anything I could do about it.
If, that's the option in the future. There's always a north bypass that can be done, and there's a south bypass.
And there's four exits to I-ten.
Exactly.
So?
Six lanes dead-ending at Stewart Street to two lanes.
I, I value your opinion. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Jimmy Messick, sixty-eight, thirty Pine Street, Milton. You know, in talking with the Florida Department of Transportation over in Chipley, they are saying that they are going to resolve the traffic problem that exists on Highway ninety. Now, right now, the current plan is to six-lane Highway ninety from the Escambia River that separates Santa Rosa County from Escambia County, all the way to Stewart Street. And that's part of the Highway ninety project that is being planned. And then they're going to four-lane if that becomes the alternative that is decided, you know, from Stewart Street all the way out to eighty-seven South. Now, they had told me that they were going to resolve the Highway ninety problem. My concern is that if we really object too much, that they may say, hey, you can have your no-build situation, and to heck with you. But I don't believe they'll do that. I think what we need to do is to work with FDOT to try to see which alternative they come up with that is the best alternative, and then try to get the best that we can out of that. And one of the concessions that they have made is that complete streets concept. And they didn't have to even agree to that. They could come in here and say, we're going to put the four-lane through here, and we're going to be bare-bones with it, and we're going to do it, and to heck with you. Because it's our road, we're going to take care of it. The other thing is that Highway ninety improvement was scheduled to come up before the, came thinking of the name of it, what's your, on the?
TPO.
There you go. In two thousand and thirty-five, and it's about an eight-to-twelve-year project, once something comes up and gets started. So if we were looking at two thousand and thirty-five, we were talking about two thousand and forty-five, you know, before Highway ninety would be, you know, improved. So the TPO agreed to move that from two thousand and thirty-five back down to two thousand and fifteen. And in two thousand and fifteen is when the PDNE was started, looking at the, what needed to be done, which alternatives, and doing the studies for the PDNE. That moved it forward twenty years to take care of the problem that exists on Highway ninety. We're still talking eight to ten years before anything is actually done, because it has to go through, finish up the PDNE. Then it has to go into the design phase. Then it goes into the right-of-way acquisition before it ever gets to the construction. So we're talking still another eight to ten years before it's actually done. There's some opinions that the Highway eighty-seven bypass, which would go from where eighty-seven connects to Highway ninety, and goes out and comes back into Highway eighty-seven just south of Whiting Field, would relieve most of the traffic from the downtown area. But FDOT has already done a study on that and said that within ten years, that that would in fact relieve some of the traffic downtown. But even if that were done, that within another ten years, the traffic would be back up to the current level. So I think we need to deal with FDOT and get the best that we can get from what they are going to decide to do with Highway ninety. And from everything I've heard from FDOT, alternative one, which is the widening of Highway ninety through downtown, is the alternative that has the most viability, the least interruption of resources downtown. So I think we ought to deal with FDOT and try to work to get the best we can out of a situation that they're going to take care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ricky Downs, fifty-two oh five Hawkenes Drive. Kind of to piggyback on what Jimmy was saying as well, is one of the things that I've had with my conversations with DOT is, one of the issues, you know, all of us say, hey, it's the state of Florida, they have endless amount of money, but a lot of the money that they get for these roads is actually federal funds. And part of that is, they have to show that they safely connect roads, that they do certain things to be able to get that federal funding. And one of the issues brought up to us in, in one of our meetings with them is, they said with the, they've already pretty much set in stone that we're six-laning all the way to Stewart Street, and they, and then they're, so the part that we're looking at obviously is what we're talking about is this downtown area. And they said that bottlenecking that from six lanes to two-lane would not be something that they would still be able to get federal funding for the part they're six-laning, which they could not do. They have to safely, so you, you can't bottleneck that much traffic into two lanes and it be safe. Feel like, I, I used to live in Orlando, it's kind of like going down on I-4 in the middle of the day, you're taking your life on your own hands, so you have four lanes and they're all, you know, moving around at the same time. So that's one of the issues, and, and, and kind of like what Jimmy said is that I, I feel that if we're supporting a no-build, or we're supporting, we're going to fight you every step of the way until, you know, we get whatever we get, I, I don't think we're going to get what's best for our downtown area. I, I, I had the pleasure of being able to go to Kansas City a few weeks ago, and, and one of the things I really wanted to do is see, you know, what did this city do with their downtown? I mean, you hear about Kansas City's downtown life, and, and I did try the barbecue while I was there, which was amazing. I didn't realize I'd never had barbecue before. I thought I was a southern boy, I knew what barbecue was, and Kansas City's got it, I'm telling you, it's amazing. But one of the cool things, I wanted to go downtown and really see what they've done. And, and, and I've been paying attention to this a lot more the last couple of years since I, I've been involved, more involved here than I ever have before looking at roads and that sort of thing. And they have actually four interstates that go right through their downtown. They have two four-lane highways that go through their downtown area. One of the things, obviously, that makes Kansas City different than us is there's a lot of money there, so, I mean, that's one thing. And then they used to have a really vibrant industry there as well, to where they had a lot of old factories and stuff that they don't produce anymore, so they've turned those into, you know, housing and, and, and shopping malls that are actually multi-level and, and all kinds of neat stuff down there as well. And one of the things that you had brought up, Quint Studer, in the talk that we all attended before, and one of the things that he said that kind of stuck with me, isn't necessarily whether it's four lanes, or six lanes, or eight lanes, or two lanes, you have to have a reason for people to slow down. And yes, it's great, like, if everybody's stuck in a traffic jam, and they can look both ways, and your shop's there, then, you know, maybe that helps. But if you don't have the traffic jams to where people are, know that they can go in and out and get in and out of something, then it makes it a little easier. And if you have a reason for them to stop. And, and that's one of the things, is their, their downtown area, you could tell, did stuff kind of like what we've been talking about with, say, like the Milton Corridor, and having a, a shopping district area right there between the river and those buildings. And, and some of the things that are in that master plan to pull people to slow them down, whether there's a two-lane or a four-lane there, I, I don't think that is, you know, the biggest issue. And, and if DOT is honest whenever on their speaking with us, is that they said, whether they two-lane or four-lane, they are going to take every care, every precaution to preserve whatever historical buildings and, and character that our downtown has. And I think working with the state, instead of fighting them tooth and nail, you know, to the end, is going to be, you know, better resolution for all of us. And all of us can be happy. The people that live in East Milton or work in East Milton can get back and forth into town easily. We all want, you know, that East Milton, both of those East Milton industrial parks to do really well, because that's going to bring stuff to our city. And there's not a big business going to put something that's going to employ the amount of people that we would love to see, you know, a, a big business go out there. There's nobody going to go out there if they can't get their employees to and from work easily, they're going to take a pass. And that's actually what we've heard from a, a company that was looking at putting a a distribution center in an area somewhere in Northwest Florida. Um, they said the same thing, and like, look, man, I've seen, I, I looked up y'all's town, and I saw this bickering that y'all are doing over this one little road, and I, I don't think that's what we want. So it's something that I think we all need to get in together and, um, um, work together and try to find the best solution for all of us.
Thank you.
Real quick, Kim McCarthy, 7060 Highway 90. I want to offer my personal eyewitness testimony to this East Milton traffic jam. Nobody sees it like I see it. My store is right there, I am open seven days a week, I see it. But you know what it is? It's a slowdown. And I've never seen it unless there's an accident actually just stop and be impossible. And my customers will go, oh, there's a lot of cars out there. Yeah, but they'll let you ride in. They did, they let you ride in, and you know what? You just keep moving. As long as the timing of the lights is proper in the downtown Milton, it just keeps moving. And sometimes there is more traffic than others, but it just keeps moving. And it never takes very long to clear up. I see it every day, I am right there. So that is my eyewitness testimony. And yes, it can be addressed, but, but that's why we look at those alternatives. But it's not horrible, and I can get right out in it, in the thick of it, I keep moving, and I'm on my way, no problem.
All right, thank you. All right, this is the last one. Thank you.
My name again is Lauren Sherek, 6034 Massalt Road, uh, in Jamie's Ridge. I felt like I, I was remiss and I should have added another, what I feel is a pretty poignant comment, uh, to mine, uh, which is, I, I said I just moved down here. I'm originally from Massachusetts, and I grew up in a town named Lexington, which, as you know, is a shot heard round the world, don't fire it easy, the whites of their eyes. When I came down here, I was blown away to see your memorial downtown regarding Lexington, Battle of Lexington and Concord, and Paul Revere, Paul Revere's ride. I actually lived on Paul Revere Road in Arlington, Mass. I grew up from when I was five until, uh, I went to college in Boston, uh, in Lexington, and then moved to Arlington. So I've lived in historical towns until I moved down, uh, to this area. But, um, I have seen history preserved in Lexington. I've seen the John Hancock, uh, home moved across the street when I was a little girl. Uh, and you can't tell me that Lexington is a historical town and hasn't been preserved. Uh, it is four lanes downtown. Um, and, uh, I just wanted to make that comment that, uh, even though I'm new to this area, I certainly, uh, respect the history that's here. I love the downtown area too, and history is important to me as well. Thank you for your time.
All right. All right. Yes, sir. This will be the final speaker. We've got to move on.
My name is Claude Duval. I live in East Milton, I've lived in East Milton for 35 years. My business was in East Milton, and my existing business is still. I am the president of the East Milton Water System, I am president of the East Milton Voluntary Fire Department. I don't know whoever, who anyone in this room is talking to, but everybody that I talk to, they're very, very upset that this four-lane has not yet happened. It should happen. I don't know where Kim is sitting in traffic, but if you guys have noticed that the Marcus Bayou historical plaque faces the roadway. The reason is you have a one hell of a lot of time to sit there and read it. I've memorized it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right, uh, I'm going to go ahead and close out this, uh, public hearing. That was the last one.
Just for a matter of fact, at public hearings, people are supposed to be able to speak until, until it's closed, if it's a public hearing. I'm asking, staff or whatever.
I mean, we, I'm, we giving citizens the right, you know, to speak, um, we, we've been going on for an hour, but...
I, I know, but I don't want to speak, but I'm just saying, can you just abruptly say, this is the last one? That's my question. Staff, somebody? Help me, lawyer?
Mr. Bruton, I don't think anyone knew you wanted to speak, and...
I don't want to speak, I'm just saying...
Mayor, I mean, I mean, this has been going on, uh, there's been a lot of different remarks that have been heard, and so was, uh, different positions...
Was that topic publicly noticed as an agenda item?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Yep. Here it is, in, in, in the paper.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
But that's what he needs to ask, instead of saying, we're going to just close it out. That was, that's just my comment.
Is there anyone out there that has an opinion that hasn't been expressed?
Well, not necessarily.
I'm just asking. Either for it or against it, uh, you know, I'd like to hear someone that has something else to say.
We're kind of, we're kind of hearing the same things over and over again.
But, but the people deserve to be heard.
Absolutely.
That's, 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 that's...
Absolutely. That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Diane Griffith, live at 6879 Cedar Ridge Circle. Um, I'm going to try to keep calm. Uh, I didn't hear anything about 90 being increased in size until I got a flyer yesterday at my door. I don't remember ever getting a card saying that it was being considered. Um, and I have seen this city grow since 2002, and I'm from up north in historic country, Shaker Village in Concord, New Hampshire, outside of Concord, New Hampshire. A lot of things change, and you can still preserve what's there, but progress has to be made. And I'm sure that my neighborhood, as the gentleman said, he went from door to door, and I've dealt with this situation with the city council once before, door to door in my neighborhood, and got something changed. And I usually use Baghdad or go to Avalon to get on the highway, but recently I have gone, come across by Copper Possum, and been amazed at the traffic that's there. It has greatly increased, and it, something needs to be done about it. And I think you should plan on working with somebody about it, if the state's willing to come in and work with you. That's basically it.
All right.
If you all want to say one thing, and this is, if y'all saw the paper about two weeks ago, the front page, that this is probably one of the fastest-growing counties in the, in the whole state of Florida, and our economy here is really good, and we have contractors that are probably some of our clients, and we're growing. And the traffic is going to get worse, and the neighborhoods are going to keep growing. So that's something we need to be proud of, is that we were in the top financial as being stable here. And that's going to draw more people here, and hopefully we'll have more schools. So if they're willing to help us build this right and preserve, and I'm very familiar with Lexington, I was very blessed to get to go to Boston, that's a beautiful, beautiful area, and I actually went in Paul Revere's house. So I just wanted to throw that in, that, that we need to be proud of Santa Rosa County to be in one of the top 10, I think, as far as financially stable, uh, people are not filing bankruptcy, uh, and our economy is doing very well. So that's something to be proud of.
All right. Anybody else?
Do I count? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
No, my question was, do I count?
Sure, you can speak.
Miller McCombs, 5081 Canal Street again. I only want to say that history's a wonderful thing, and our heritage is something wonderful to preserve, but to consider making something smaller and more narrower, that would be costly to any business on Highway 90 or close to, that would, when you're talking about putting a bypass road around our city, that would cost one of our tax-paying business people, their business, is not worth considering, in my opinion. I think you should be concerned about the people that live in the city of Milton and their livelihoods, that they make a living off of it, and you need to try to keep the business here and keep your roads nearby where people can get it and not support alternative methods around the city. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thanks, I just wanted to remind everyone that we are very fortunate that we have not one, not two, but three exits from Highway 90 onto 10. So, you know, personally, if I'm trying to accommodate someone to go to Walmart faster, um, I suggest they get to the highway. And, uh, sometimes I just wonder if, if they are conscious of the timing. If you try to leave when school lets out, you're going to sit in the traffic. If you try to leave when the prison changes shifts, you're going to sit in the traffic. I mean, that's kind of a given. And you would kind of think that the people who do that would get that every day. We do have a couple of subcommittees looking at putting, um, the light on the far side of the present courthouse on a blinker, and the timing of the lights, we've worked with Chief Tyndall on some of those things. So it's not like we're ignoring everyone's sorrow with the traffic. But at the same time DOT is moving on with all this, they have no answer, this is a slayer for me, no answer and no plan for Pond Creek Bridge. So they're going to sit, they're going to six or eight, but it's going to come to a screeching halt at that little pond.
Actually, they have an answer for Pond Creek Bridge, because that was in the Glover Lane PDNE that they were doing for us on very well first. Uh, they're going to take Pond Creek Bridge, instead of it being two bridges, it's going to be one all the way across, and it's going to be six lanes, three on each side. And then it will have a, like a walker median in the middle, and it will have back lanes on both sides.
So they did decide that, and you got that?
Right.
I, I didn't get it the last TPO meeting, that's why I'm asking.
Right, it's in the Glover Lane, uh, PDNE, but they still are out on whether they're going to move our road down the road or keep it the same. We're still battling that out.
Are you going to fight for that?
Uh, yeah.
For the new intersection?
Uh, for the new intersection, I would like to keep it where it is.
Okay, I was just wondering.
I'd rather, you know, yeah, my property be worth more, it's better for me, believe it or not. Um, the only rebuttal I have, and, and just from your comments, is that, you know, you said, stated that, um, you know, hey, if people know that whenever it's busy in the evenings or in the mornings, then you just don't go around. Well, that's the problem, is that we want to support businesses in that downtown area. We want people to want to go down there any time of the day.
Oh, I get that.
From 3:00 to 6:00, you want people to say, hey, I don't mind getting out on this road, because I can actually drive down the road and get to where I want to go. And, um, I understand what you're saying, is that, you know, hey, if you're in a traffic jam, go around it, but that's what we're trying to say, is that, you know, business owners that want to be along Highway 90, they want people to go buy their business, that makes your property more, just like Jeff said, my property's worth more on Glover Lane if I have traffic going through it, instead of if they bypass it around down the road to Old Baghdad Highway or whatever, then...
But if that makes that intersection, which has so many wrecks, safer...
Right, well, and they have two different plans, and, and the one we gave them, I think, does everything that they're wanting to do, right? Um, to, to make it safer, but we do agree it needs to be safer as well, but...
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, of course.
So, I, I think I have a general question, and it kind of applies to everyone that spoke tonight. Obviously, some of us don't want a four-lane, some of us do.
Right.
But what in the language that we're actually talking about do you oppose? Because nothing in here says no four-lane.
Right.
All it says is we value a historic district, and we would like to have something done to make sure that our district, if it, whatever is done with the roadway improvement, that it will be taken care of.
That's true.
So, I mean, I know what the letter said that people got, and people walked around and talked, but what exactly in this language is a problem?
Well, and I think too, that, in, in, in asking Jeff, because he's the one that put this language forth, it was that his intent is to try to say, with this language, I don't want it four-laned. And that's why, that's the way it was implied to us, and, and me and Jeff had had that conversation actually, so that's why I took it that way.
I understand, but in the actual language we came up with...
I honestly am in agreeance with you, that I feel that that statement is vague, and I think it's redundant with what's already in the comprehensive plan...
Okay.
...as well, but...
Well, that's my question, I want to know why you oppose this language, not why you don't want the four-lane, or why some people do this language specifically that we're talking about.
Right. Well, and that's one of the things too, is because...
Well, it has been proposed, that hasn't been voted on or agreed on.
Right.
This is what we're talking about tonight.
And I'm with you, and I, I don't fully oppose this language. I will say that, um, you know, speaking to other people, that they feel that this makes it even more restrictive than it was before, um, of us being able to get what we can out of DOT. Um, also too, one of the things that I guess hadn't been brought up as well, is that, uh, the planning board, which is an advisory board to y'all, um, two different times has heard this exact thing, and voted against adding this language twice as well. Um, so I feel that, you know, that planning board, knowing the people that are on it, are a pretty diverse group throughout the community that seem to be, you know, have level heads about what we should be doing as well. So I think they should be heard, as well as, you know, any of the people that are speaking, that, you know, I understand you have your constituents that you speak to, but then also the rest of us have an opinion we'd like y'all to listen to.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
George Sheridan, 5585 Polaris Drive, Milton. I stated that I was opposed to this.
Yep.
And I'm opposed to the language.
Right.
Because I believe that before I get home, if you pass it in, FB, FDOT will be made aware of it by people here, and they'll see it as us fighting against them.
Okay. Thank you.
Vernon Compton, 5149 Santa Rosa Street. I've served on the TPO Citizens Advisory Committee for years and years and years, and been trained by DOT on the PDNE, the road building, all, all the processes associated with getting roads into the, into the plan, what the TPO responsibilities are. And one of the things I'd like to say is that it is, it is a state highway, it's DOT's responsibility, and this is a two-way street. Your job as the city council is putting Milton first, and that's exactly what you're doing. You're looking at the interest of the business people that have spoken. The difference between a lot of these other business areas in Milton on the four-lane portions is, they have really large boulevards, they have large crash zones. We do not have that downtown. It's not a four-lane road, I've seen the, um, designs by DOT, it's basically a five-lane road with turn lanes. It's a very constrained corridor, it's a small downtown, it's a small highway area. The reason that buildings have been run through, everything in downtown has been hit, because, has been because of excessive speed. You're trying to slow people down in the downtown. If we really wanted to thrive and be successful economically, we can do it, I think everybody here wants the same thing, if we could just learn how to talk together and stop attacking each other. But downtown, it's not like those other areas. I mean, you just don't have a crash zone, you don't have the room to do that without having a road right up against the door of your building, basically. You're trying to make it conducive for people to walk and bicycle and, and have outside seating. Like someone mentioned, the noise and vibration, it's not just moving a building, it's all of the other impacts that occur in a downtown. So I just say that, and I'll end by, again, using Crestview as an example, because this is from, they, they hired someone, they were dealing with the same thing that we are, they how, hired a consultant who basically said, the, the, you know, the big issue is how do we deal with this traffic on Highway 90? Um, a partial solution is trying to get more east-west, north-south connections. Economic development is not going to happen if you don't have connectivity. And they're trying to get a, a road system set up where they take the pressure off of 85. And I feel some are arguing that we should continue to just look only at Highway 90, and we do have other options. I'm not saying bury your head in the sand, we do want to address it with DOT and work with them, but the only solution is not four-laning. And no, they cannot go away. It's a state highway, it's something that they have to deal with, and we need to be able to work together with them on it. It's not mutually exclusive. So I think what you're trying to do with this is the right path, um, and you're going to be supporting the businesses on the four-lane, and you're going to be supporting the revitalization of downtown Milton. Thank you.
All right, thanks. George Anderson?
If I could, if there aren't any other speakers, just a couple of words on process. Tonight, what you are considering is simply the transmittal of a proposed ordinance that would amend the text of the comprehensive plan with the language that's been described previously, which I believe, uh, has been noticed here this evening, noticed before the planning board, and everyone has been exposed to throughout this process. Transmittal means that we'll forward this information to the Department of Education, the Department of Environmental Protection, the Department of State, the Department of Transportation, the West Florida Regional Planning Council, the Northwest Florida Water Management District, the Naval Air, Air Station Whiting Field, and... Management District, the Naval Air, Air Station Whiting Field in Santa Rosa County. All will be given 30 days to respond to the context of the amendment, following which they will have an opportunity to comment. If no comments are received, you can anticipate potentially holding an adoption hearing in February. I might add, there's been considerable discussion about, um, past investigations into this issue. Um, next month, the Department of Transportation will release the results of their PDNE, a $1.5 million, two-year study to examine the best alternative to the challenge Highway 90 poses to the city of Milton. I look forward to the, to the, to the information. Uh, it will be released to the TPO. I know this council looks forward to its receipt and, uh, the public, uh, who have an interest should also attempt to obtain that information in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, uh, some time ago, I think at a, uh, committee that would take a look, some time ago, you put together or committee was put together to look at some of the possible problems in the downtown area and if there were any, anything that could be done to relieve some of that until we get the major findings from FDOT. Uh, did we have a report from that committee yet?
I, I have not received an official report from the fact finding committee.
I think they call that, think, think.
All right. Whatever they call it, I haven't received a report.
I mean, you named it, I think. Just saying.
Well, I, I actually think that, uh, that committee could have come up with some suggestions to do some relieving of the traffic flow.
And, and they may, and they may have, uh, it was a fact finding committee, um, they may have researched and looked up, uh, facts. I, I don't know, I, I haven't, I have not received a report from the committee. Has staff received anything? Okay, well, at this date, no.
That's right. The reason that I mention that too, some of the things have been brought up in terms of traffic light, the timing, uh, also in terms of, uh, maybe, uh, annoying traffic in various areas. I thought that would have been a very valuable piece of research to offer, you know, at least to have shown the public that we were out there trying to look at some alternatives to help alleviate that, because it is a fact, we have a traffic problem. A major traffic problem. It is a fact that we are increasing in population. Uh, it is a fact that we know that we've had a great study, uh, done so far, uh, by FDOT and I'm too, I'm looking forward to those, those answers, uh, those recommendations next month. I've spoken myself, FDOT, and I know that, that at least tied it down to two possible, two possible solutions there. Um, and looking forward for that. You know, in honor for progress to occur, uh, sometimes you gotta give a little and take a little back and forth. But we certainly want a thriving, uh, economic drive, uh, driver downtown. We, we certainly don't want to impact on our businesses. Uh, we are growing, people are talking, they love Milton, it's a great historic district. I did, I read some more, I, I went back years ago to read some, uh, other information. I, I had some concerns at first with him talking about even just moving the Fisher Hamilton Building. How feasible would that have been? How much would that have cost? Uh, would it have been better, uh, not to do that, to look at another alternative with another bridge? I think you're gonna be pleased to find out some other, they have been listening and there might be some, uh, results here that would be pleasing. We will all be pleased, uh, we, we all have ideas what, about what should happen. Certainly, that historical feature of downtown, the Fisher Hamilton. Uh, I've spoken even this week to several of my Jewish friends and they certainly had some concerns as well in terms of that history, in terms of that. But we want to move forward and, 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 um, I'm thinking as we continue to talk today, I begin to see some closure and attitudes. I think the basic problem have been attitude problems. We can't work anything out with attitude. It's okay to have some opposing views, but we need to look into the situation to find out what would be best for mankind, for the people of the city of Milton. And not only that, it's gonna be impacted on other people that's not in the city of Milton. They gotta travel that route as well. So, uh, I'm, I'm thankful that we have listened to everybody and, um, if there have been any misinterpretations in whatever that data, uh, the language is, I think, uh, Mr. Randy did a fine job in explaining that, um, in terms of the historic nature. Uh, if the point of contention was a Hamilton Building, uh, the state did offer some alternatives on that. So we just not need to fight one another and I, I think it will not, I think, I think you might still be living.
Maybe.
I, I think I will.
Well.
And others will too, because I think this thing is gonna mushroom and come faster. I don't think it's gonna take another 30 or 40 years. And, uh, all I'm saying is let's continue to work in unity.
All right.
So that we can solve this problem.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I was gonna just pass on a little information you asked about the, uh, traffic finding committee, Ms. Johnson. Uh, I have not attended any of the meetings or been on it, but I have talked to several of the members who are on it. And during the process, um, the no-left turns there off of Willing, uh, 90 to Willing Street, um, that was one of the topics that they discussed and presented to me. We've had officers out there, um, I guess since probably three months now, and, uh, we've written several citations. Uh, at the beginning of it, we wrote more because several of them were courthouse employees and, uh, but since then, you know, the occurrences have faded off. Uh, DOT also, um, came through and did a study on the timing of the red lights on the 90 corridor. And they did extend, uh, the east-west timing. And I believe they extended that Canal Street and Willing Street. So if you go down there at lunchtime, that traffic flows a lot better than what it used to, used to every day. I mean, it was lined up past the bakery.
They already did it?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, good.
Yes, ma'am. So, uh, and used to it was, you know, lined up past the bakery every day. So they've already reset those timings. Uh, other than that, that was the, uh, really the two issues that, uh, um, that, you know, that I could have helped address and, uh, and of course, the city helped with the DOT. They're the ones that set that up, not me. But, uh, but, you know, um, officers did, you know, enforce the no-left-hand turns. They're still doing that, trying to see what we can do. But, uh, one thing while I've been down there, uh, you know, we'll count certain groups of, uh, cars, you know, just the number 10 and, you know, at random. And, uh, anywhere from three to five cars turn north on Willing Street that are coming from East Milton. And, and that in and of itself, just by the cars slowing to take a right-hand turn, they slow the traffic down. So, you know, on average, 40% of the traffic coming from East Milton in the mornings is, you know, taking a ride onto Willing Street. Uh, but other than that, that's pretty much all I've got for you. But, uh, I do know that, uh, you know, some of the members on that committee have been meeting and trying to brainstorm and come up with ideas and, of course, whenever they contact me, I'll give them whatever I can, so, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Another, on, I happen to be on that one. Um, one of the other things was to, we made the no-left for trucks to make a no-right for trucks coming from East Milton into downtown because Berry Hill is narrow and no matter how wide we make it, if you're, people are going this way and you're going that way, there's not enough road for a truck to get there. You have to back up or we have to let you go to make it wide enough for the truck to make the turn. They'll just go up to Stewart Street, they've got all the room they need. And they don't need to go down the side streets either, because they've got the bicycle trail and the railroad track. They just, just need to be retrained to go up where they've got plenty of room to turn. Those, some of those things will kind of even out and, you know, I walk all the time. I walked to work for two years, so I, I know as well as many people, but we're all trained. We're going to work and the, the chief will attest to all the, uh, two-hour parking only and eight out of 10 of them are courthouse employees who park there all day, which sort of limits people visiting the memorial and businesses and, you know, whatever. But I'm not writing tickets, you know, I, I have plenty though. I, I'm guilty of enough that I mind my own, but in the traffic, there's a lot of opportunities and we're, I'm glad we can agree to disagree and I, I really don't, I'll be alive when they finish six lane and Highway 90. I don't want, that's okay, because traffic does move on. And I'm glad to find out they did something about the bridge, because I keep asking about that and they had no answer. So if they finally have an answer and they found a pocket of money to pluck it out of, it'd be better.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say, I'd like for us to just wait and see what Randy was talking about, um, in the, uh, uh, DOT and all the other organizations that are involved, DEP and EPA and all of them, whatever they come up with and let's let that be kind of a guide. I feel like that, uh, they have better knowledge of all these different places in the country, uh, where the highways go and, and I think that we ought to just hold off on a vote on this until we hear from that in January when.
Well, what he's, what he's, what he said was.
February, okay.
Yeah, Ms. Ms. Lunsford, what he, what he said though was, that's gonna be the, the PDNE study will be released, um, the results of that study in February. But as far as, uh, Division of Environmental Protection and other groups getting involved, he was talking about if we pass this, uh, then notification of this will be sent, the update of the comprehensive plan will be sent out to those agencies, uh, the trans, the transmittal package. In fact, before we can. And so that, that's, and we'll hear back to those organizations, um, if.
In February.
If this gets passed, well, no, that's a different, that's a totally different shooting match.
Right.
Um, if, if this gets, if this gets approved, we'll hear back from those organizations. The Florida Department of Transportation is gonna weigh in, um, on the PDNE study in February.
I'm afraid that they're gonna just say a, a no-build and we're not gonna get anything done if we wait and wait and wait and wait and keep rolling this thing around.
Well, you're, that's pretty much what they told me.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
You don't like it and you need to get over it because there's lots more stuff in here, it's bigger fish to fry.
That's right.
And, and I'm, I'm fine.
Okay.
I mean, I don't have to like it, but I represent a room full of people and Oz has spoken repeatedly. I hear you.
All right. Anybody else want to speak on this matter? Thing no one does, I'm gonna close out this public hearing. Um, item number two, we have the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, can we have five? Um, I've got a.
Let's, let's go ahead.
Can we at least walk through the ordinances?
Yeah, let's, let's walk through this real quick and then we can take five.
Okay.
All right.
Thought you were moving on to something else.
Well, there's, there's item number two on, under number seven. All right. We have ordinance, uh, 1469-18, the transmittal package comprehensive plan amendment, uh, first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Milton, Florida, amending the city of Milton comprehensive plan as amended, amending chapter three, future land use element, section one, objective 1.4 with addition of policy 1.4.5 and adding language to policy 1.8.10. Item B, two, historic preservation, amending chapter four, transportation element. Section D, objective two, issue, downtown redevelopment to include language for establishing value for the historic character of the downtown area and protect those resources from the adverse effects of future roadway improvements, providing for a title and providing for an effective date. The first reading.
We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Lowry, second, Councilman Snow. Discussion. Thing there is none, please vote. The motion passes with two nays. All right, uh, we will continue this meeting after a five-minute recess.
Mr. Mayor, just so you're aware, I have to leave at 7:30. So if we can really keep it to five minutes, I can read my ordinances and be excused, please.
Well, that's up to Sharon, she's the one that's always. All right. Ah! Woo! What time is it now? Okay.
Did you give me a list in the past from your church? Okay, good, good.
Getting aggressive here.
Sing us a song, Mayor.
Okay, okay. Alright, as advertised, five minutes and we're ready. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm not aware of any invited speakers tonight, but we do have a general consent agenda, um, as forwarded from the executive committee meeting held on Tuesday, January second, two thousand and eighteen at five-thirty PM, and so do we have a motion to approve the executive, uh, committee, I mean, the general consent agenda.
Second.
Motion from Councilwoman Lunsford, second from, uh, Councilman Lowry, discussion. If there is none, please vote. And the motion passes. Can you push abstain on her? Yes, make it back.
Abstain.
Well, she probably is.
Going to abstain it.
We had Heather, Heather's about to leave, so we, she got it, okay. So, uh, sure tiebreaker? No, and the motion passes, alright. Ordinances, resolutions, proclamations, Heather?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First is fourteen sixty-seven dash seventeen, an ordinance relating to special meetings of the city council of the City of Milton and the circumstances under which such meetings may be called, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances or portions of ordinances inconsistent herewith and providing an effective date. This is the second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Lowry, second from Councilwoman, uh, Johnson, discussion. If there is none, please vote. Motion passes.
It was Smith, but no, no matter.
Unanimously, alright.
Ordinance number fourteen sixty-eight dash seventeen, an ordinance repealing ordinance number eight oh four relating to animal control and replacing it by adopting Santa Rosa County ordinance number two thousand and two dash twenty-two, twenty-five and all amendments thereto and by establishing further for the City of Milton a community cat program, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances and conflicts herewith and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Lowry, second, Councilman Snow, discussion. If there is none, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
And next on the list is budget amendment resolution fourteen twenty-two dash eighteen, a resolution of the city council of the City of Milton, Florida, amending the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen budget, changing the estimated total revenues and expenditures of various funds and providing for an effective date. There's part A on your agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion, Councilman, uh, was it Powell? Second by Councilman Snow, discussion?
Uh, this is just for the payoff?
Yes, sir. Just moving the money around.
Okay.
Alright, any further discussion? If there is none, please vote. And the motion passes unanimously.
There are no further ordinances or resolutions in my stack.
Do you have anything to report?
No, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
May be excused.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I be excused, please?
Yes, sir. Um, city clerks report. Alright, uh, TPO, uh, nothing to report this time except for the meeting in February, please attend. Um, TDC representative, Peggy Smith?
I have nothing to report, they're, um, making some changes and, um, I, I spoke with the chief, some of, some of the stuff that the TDC's going over, um, overlaps with the continuous city traffic, county traffic, the bridges and, and some of these things, so, um, nothing earth-shattering as of yet.
Alright. Council reports, we have Mr. Lowry who had, has something he wanted to speak on lighting. Mr. Lowry?
Yes, I just wanted to bring up that I would like for us to look into the lighting on the river, down at the River, well, it's, uh, yeah, while it looked awful beautiful during the Christmas decorations, now it's gonna be dark, so, we could look into something and see about getting some lighting down there and make it safe.
Right. Sir?
Maybe there'll be some leftover solar lighting from the park project, or perhaps we could redirect them until the next funding round.
Uh, we can, uh, we can definitely, um, send something maybe to the RRT, um, there's a lot of options, uh, different cities, uh, there was one, one time I was looking at, uh, gas light, we have natural gas, uh, kinda gives it a historic feel downtown, on the River Walk or, uh, or some sort of appropriate lighting. I like the idea, maybe we can move that to, uh, RRT or perhaps, uh, committee of the whole?
Committee of the whole, yes, sir.
Alright, do that. Um, thank you for the suggestion. Uh, so, under the mayor's report, um, I have a, a letter here, uh, from Mr. Hamilton, Murray Hamilton, who could not, he could not be here tonight and he wanted me to, to pass along this information to the city council. He says, "On behalf of the Fellowship Churches of Santa Rosa County, the Martin Luther King Jr. Breakfast Committee requests your attendance at the annual Martin Luther King Jr. Weekend Event. Um, things will kick off on Saturday morning, January thirteenth at nine AM at the Santa Rosa County Auditorium. Tickets are ten dollars each, um, I believe you can pay at the door. Speaker will be, uh, Ms. Ava Parker and, uh, she'll speak. And of course, uh, on Sunday, January fourteenth, at six PM at Mount Pilgrim African Baptist Church, they'll have, um, it's on Martin Luther King Drive, they'll host a commemorative service. The speaker will be Reverend Michael Thomas, the pastor of Saint John Divine Baptist Church of Milton, and so that'll be Sunday evening. And then on Monday, of course, we have the, um, the Martin Luther King Jr. Parade and that'll be at ten AM, starting at Milton High School, um, at the parking lot there where the bus ramp is and it's gonna end at Elva Street at noon, the opening ceremony, uh, and following the block party at Dr. Martin Luther King Drive. And then, of course, um, I believe noon, we have the, uh, the ribbon cutting for the Lucille Johnson Park upgrades and so, did you get a chance to invite the former council members as many as you could? Good, none of that was requested. We had, um, the parade will be, uh, starting at ten AM and so, I know that, uh, Pam had some instructions, council's gonna be riding in the parade, what, what did you wanna communicate? Any to be here at what time?
You have to, um, come up here Friday afternoon to get your candy and signs, be at Milton High School at nine-thirty on Monday.
Alright, so you, so candy and signs on Friday and nine-thirty and, uh, if you wanna ride, we'll see you down there. Any other questions on that? Alright, uh, so Martin Luther King Weekend happening, uh, this coming weekend, it's already here. Alright, with that said, uh, we'll turn it over to the city manager's report.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. We got item number eight thirty-two, is a task order from Baskerville Donovan Inc., this is the task order that's been received from BDI to prepare an application for the Triumph and the POT2 funds. Staff does recommend approval of the task order for BOT, uh, for BDI for this. Uh, the task order is for twenty-five thousand dollars and it would come up to twenty-five thousand dollars and would come out of water sewer reserves. This is a result of a meeting that, uh, the mayor and I attended with Senator Broxton for the development of the, um, of an application to request funds for the North Santa Rosa Regional Water Reclamation Facility, um, for the POT2 funds and for the Triumph funds. We have previously submitted a pre-application to the Triumph Funds for the treatment facility, uh, which was a three-page thing that we put together and did that. Uh, if we are selected to provide a full application, it will be a very extensive, uh, application, probably in the ten, twenty-page-long type, almost book-supported thing that we'd look for and the same thing with the POT2 application that we put together. Uh, and I would, uh, I think it's good for us to have the support of BDI and have them working to help us get those applications put together in a way that would, uh, probably help us to really get a, get some funding through those applications, so...
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilman Lowry, second, Councilman Powell, discussion.
If you have any pointers that you want expressed to, um, our legislative body, there are two dates that I'll be going over there with the coalition of other political women and so, um, they already know I'm coming, so if they know I'll want something, they expect it, I might as well deliver.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright. I think this is a good move, gonna set us up nicely, uh, as we move forward.
I mean, there's a lot of money on the table with the Triumph and the POT2 and we need to make sure that we got...
Yeah, and a lot of South Florida wants it.
Yeah.
Well, we have, well, we, we have a very, uh, have a very healthy project, I think, um, that we have backing, Senator Broxton is on board.
Right.
Well, as, and of course, uh, Representative Williamson, Jair, all the local politicians are on board with this one. Um, it's got a positive outlook and I think this is gonna help us get there if we're to receive any of the money at all, um, so, we do have a motion, we have a second, please Motion passes unanimously.
Alright, next one's item eight thirty-five, is wastewater treatment plant influent pump rebuild. Um, this is the Wilco twenty-five horsepower influent pump at the wastewater treatment plant requires rebuilding, staff recommends rebuilding the pump. There are four twenty-five horsepower Wilco influent pumps in the treatment plant master lift station, Barnes pump is temporarily installed to replace the Wilco and we need to come a ready service reserve and that's nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents and that will be pulled from our budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Lowry, second, Councilwoman Johnson. Alright, any discussion? If there is none, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Alright, Mr. Mayor, that completes my report.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, item seventeen, persons to appear, is anyone here today that'd like to speak to the Milton City Council about an item that was not found on the agenda? If so, please come forward, take your name, address, record, please, and welcome to the City of Milton.
Glen Hill, two thousand scenic highway, I just wanted to make sure that you got the email and the agenda for Thursday's meeting.
Did.
Okay, cool. I wanted to make sure they had got that email to you, thank you.
Alright, anyone else? Alright, if anyone wants to speak, uh, we're gonna close it out and, uh, this meeting is adjourned, drive safe.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, he did? Oh, yeah, that's right, he did.
Yeah, he's not retired for both.
Yeah, he did, he did, he did, he did.
Wouldn't be retired, be a pastor.
Oh, I know, man, that's, that's, that didn't work.
Look at heaven.
Peggy's got, Peggy's got work.
It's too late.
I'll find out.
That's fine, I'll do it, I don't wanna be the only one, no.